Be fairly represented because they stayed at home and you had another public hearing. So to the extent you can, try to deliberate and come to a decision that way with just staff questions.
Okay. With that guidance, Lisa, to help us deliberate and to make sure that all of us are on the same page as commissioners, can we just do a short overview of the project and then we'll take it to the commissioner deliberation?
Certainly, and Andrea here beside me is ready to do that presentation. Just you can stay seated and you just use the microphone.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Andrea Barber with the Community Plan Section, and I will be presenting Agenda Item 24A, a request to amend the Bordeaux Whites Creek Hanes Trinity Community Plan. In addition, there is an associated rezoning with this plan amendment request. The property at 633 West Green Lane located north of Bradley Parkway and west of Whites Creek Pike serves as a southern gateway into the Whites Creek neighborhood. The applicant requested to amend the land use policy of this property outlined in red, which is currently rural maintenance. Staff recommends approval to amend the Bordeaux Whites Creek Hanes Trinity Community Plan by changing land use policy from rural maintenance to rural neighborhood center policy and suburban neighborhood evolving with conservation policy remaining in place. Issues that were raised by the commission at the November 10 NPC meeting include floodplain preservation, intensity and density of the apartments, suburban policy, traffic impacts, and the lack of a second public meeting to discuss the proposed suburban policy. Staff facilitated a second community meeting on December 1, 2022, and this is where we discussed the multifamily district or District 3. And this, we also discussed the suburban neighborhood evolving policy. Staff is still recommending approval since this is a transition point between rural and suburban transects. And so just to remind you all that currently it's T2RM is the current policy, and the recommended policy change is for a T2NC wrapped around T3NE policy. So there were a total of four community meetings and a public hearing at the November 10 NPC meeting. And staff believes that this is suitable location for the requested policy change for the following reasons. Proposed policy is appropriate within the Nashville Next Green Network. T2 and T3 policies currently surround the study area. T2NC provides services, amenities, and housing. T3NE supports preservation of open space, mix of housing types, rural mixed use center, and commercial. And the next slides will further explain additional reasoning. So it's appropriate within the Nashville Next Green Network. T2 and T3 policies currently surround the study area. So if you notice that the rural policy is in shades of green and suburban policy is in the tan and yellow. This map provides additional land use policy context. There's future development to the south and an SP with 303 lots to the north. The next four slides are going to give you an imagery of what the current conditions near the plan amendment area, what it looks like today. So what we're looking at right now is across the street from the plan amendment, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this is across the street from the plan amendment area along Whites Creek Pike. This is looking east on Whites Creek Pike. This image is from the subdivision directly across the street. And this is another image along West Green Lane facing the study area. And so the trees are actually, that's where the development would be. So the policy intent of T2 rural maintenance, I'm sorry, rural neighborhood center is to maintain, enhance, and create rural centers that provide services in a mixture of uses for surrounding rural areas. And then the policy intent for T3 suburban neighborhood evolving is to create and enhance suburban neighborhoods with a greater housing choice, improve connectivity, and more creativity, innovative, and environmentally sensitive development techniques. With regards to transportation, Whites Creek is an arterial boulevard. Buena Vista Pike is a collector avenue, and Bradley Parkway is an expressway. And there is access to public transportation. It's provided by Wigo Route 41 with two bus stops located along Whites Creek Pike directly across the street from the site. So in summary, staff recommends approval to change the rural maintenance policy to rural neighborhood center with an area of suburban neighborhood evolving. Conservation policy remains in place. It's important to note that the suburban policy area is wrapped by rural policy to the north and east and conservation policy to the west. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are you bringing Logan up too?
Logan was going to quickly indicate and show the changes in the multifamily area.
Yep.
My name is Logan Elliott with the Planning Department, and I'll just give a brief presentation on the SP application associated with the community plan amendment. Two comments on the plan outside of District 3. One, the applicant, as Lisa mentioned, clarified the areas that will have public access easements and the areas that will not, and will only be open to the private residents of the development. The purple areas are those with public access easements, and the blue areas are those without that feature. And then the second comment is that a publicly accessible walking trail connection is now being provided from West Green Lane to the open space area in District 4 to the rear of the site along Whites Creek Pike. That was an effort to increase that interconnectivity. So looking at District 3, the plan on the left was the plan presented at the November 10 Planning Commission meeting, and the plan on the right is the plan being considered today. Following that November 10 meeting, the applicant reached out to staff and requested that staff provide comments that would bring the plan or the District 3 component into alignment with the T2 Neighborhood Center policy guidance. So staff provided comments to the applicant for, to meet that intent, and these included reorienting, building C10 to the drive to improve the orientation and streetscape presence. This resulted in an adjustment to the interior open space, so it's now more open with that building being turned. Additional landscaping information was provided for the subdistrict that includes additional tree plantings. Better demonstrates how the landscaping will soften the visual effects of these buildings and as well as enhanced pedestrian streetscape infrastructure is being provided on the primary entry drive from the internal roundabout at the top of the screen. And this was an attempt to improve the streetscape of the subdistrict. One comment that staff provided that was not addressed with the revisions concerned the proposed building heights. The Community Character Manual describes that rural neighborhood center policy building heights are generally one to two stories with limited instances of three stories. And the Community Character Manual describes that suburban neighborhood evolving buildings are generally one to three stories with four stories potentially being supported in specific locations. So staff finds the proposal of six three-story buildings and four buildings that utilize a three- or four-story split to be in excess of the building height guidance of the rural neighborhood center policy and to be more in line with the guidance of the suburban neighborhood evolving policy. So looking at the screen here, it's difficult to see on the presenter. I think it's a little easier to see on your screens in front of you that buildings C1, C2, C8, and C9 would have the three-floor split situation, and this means that four stories would be visible from the shaded side of the building and three stories would be visible from the other side of the building. The way the zoning code defines a story that a basement can technically not be considered a story. So while the buildings would appear four stories from the western or the low side of the building, they would technically be considered three-story buildings. So staff thought it was important to point out this element of the plan. And in review of these building heights, staff finds that while a multifamily development could potentially be consistent with the rural neighborhood center policy, that the building heights proposed here in District 3 are more consistent with the suburban neighborhood evolving policy. And that's staff's update since the last meeting.
Thank you, Logan. Before we turn to the commissioner deliberation, do you want to recognize the council lady? Do you want to come up and share some thoughts?
Thank you all for your service and thank you for hearing me again on this issue. As has been stated before, this project has had significant community engagement over this year, and a lot of significant changes have been made to this plan as a result of that community input. Also, as it was stated earlier, at your recommendation at the last meeting, there was another community meeting held last week that was conducted by the Planning Commission for them to explain their recommendation for the T2NC on the multifamily, not the multifamily, the single-family and townhome and commercial part of the development, but the recommendation of T3 neighborhood evolving for the multifamily apartment section of the development. And I did attend that meeting. I was there. And what I learned and what everyone else who was there at the meeting learned is that there is a sentiment by some residents in the area, not all, but some residents in the area, that this policy amendment and specific plan should not be approved because we should not allow multifamily apartments. It should not be changed to allow those multifamily apartments in this development because there are concerns as to what kind of people would be living in those apartments. And I use air quotes because that was the exact words that were said, what kind of people would be living in those apartments. And I will tell you what I told them at that meeting, that it's discrimination and it is illegal. Because in other words, they're saying that only people who want to live in, on two acre lots like them should be allowed to move into this area. And as I said, that is discrimination. It is illegal, and we have the Fair Housing Act to protect us from allowing people who have that belief to dictate where people are able to live. The fact of the matter is, this development will bring in much-needed diversity, quality diversity housing options that are currently not available in the area. In addition, it will bring in commercial, much-needed commercial and retail businesses that the community desperately wants and needs. I appreciate the work that the community, the planning staff, and the developers have done to make this a stellar project for our community, which has broad support, by the way, particularly from those residents who live directly across the street from the proposed area, as well as those residents who live adjacent to the west in the Bordeaux Hanes Trinity area. So for those reasons, I support this project, and I ask and implore you to support the staff's recommendation for the plan amendment and the SP so that more working families can invest in and enjoy the quality of life in Whites Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you okay, Herb? I'm just going to call on you as long as you're going to be here through the duration. Commissioner Lawson?
I've had the opportunity, if you can call it that, to see both sides of the discussion of this particular development. And I have noticed some things that surprised me about a number of Nashvillians and particularly some of my neighbors, since I live in the Whites Creek area. It is almost an ideal development where it is, at the intersection of Brownlee Parkway, where you have other facilities right across the street, and you have good residential property adjacent to it. I think it merits unanimous approval. It has had a lot of discussion, and if the issue of, and I wouldn't expect this commission to bring it up, but should the issue of type of residents that are in these developments come up, then I would be very, very disappointed. And at the appropriate time, if it has not been brought up, I would suggest that there be, recommend approval of 23B and another proposal to approve 23, I'm sorry, 23A and another one for 23B. But I want to listen to what my fellow commissioners have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Haines?
So I did have the chance to watch the video. I'm not sure if it's more fun to be here in person with you guys or to watch you on video. It's very, very exciting. I'm in support of 24A. I think the staff has done a really good job of analyzing the policy changes. This particular section of Whites Creek needs to be differentiated from everything north of Buena Vista. I know everyone likes to throw Whites Creek into one basket. We spent a lot of time on Nashville Next, on all of Whites Creek, but this particular section is evolving and is changing. So I'm in support of 24A. I do struggle with 24B and would love to ask a couple of questions of Lisa and the team specifically on the heights of the buildings C1, C2, C3, and C4. If you could help with that?
Sure. C1 and C2 are the three-story with a basement buildings that Logan was describing. C1 and C2 would be, appear as three stories on what I'm going to call the backside, the side towards the tree preserve area, and would appear as four stories on the front side, the street side. They would be considered three stories by the code, but they would appear in that way because of a basement level. C3 and C4 are three stories.
And so the total height of those buildings, if you're standing in the middle of the street looking in both directions, would be what? Could it be up to 50 feet?
Max height permitted would be, in that district, would be 52.
And the single-family residential to the north would be what height?
District 2, two stories max, in 35.
So the one suggestion I would throw out to the commission and to the applicant to consider is from the roundabout south for those four buildings, C1, C2, C3, and C4, that we limit those to two stories in height. That would reduce the density slightly, and I think that is a much better transition from the roundabout all the way down to the interstate, provides a much better buffer to the single-family residential for the north. So that would be my suggestion for us to consider. I do think these plans are very difficult to execute. Having done these myself, I think this is well thought out to integrate commercial uses along Whites Creek with single-family with some slightly dense multifamily, especially with the green space, but would like to see slightly less density and slightly less height in those four buildings.
Thank you. All right. I should play. Only one. Well.
I hear a pen drop. Well, I think, and I believe I shared some of these sentiments at our previous meeting. I believe that the transition and even dividing the property into the districts as it's done shows that there's a great amount of respect and attention to trying to achieve multiple goals on the site. And I think that's the best way to serve a community, particularly when you are sitting at a transect. I think, you know, for me, when you're, when I think about areas where, you know, a lot of people voice their opinions on what they see on a map and what should be in an area, that a lot of times those people then either won't enter that area because they literally have no interest in the space once it's built, and/or they are patrons and they're very excited about it. And I always try to color things in that context. I think for me, and having driven the area a few times now to really understand it, preservation of the tree canopy, I think, is what the majority of the community will really see and understand a lot of times. You know, spatially, people don't really gather a lot of information well when they're looking at it from an aerial versus what actually they would perceive at a human scale. I think that a lot of what was, what is being proposed here takes that into account. I do think that just hearing that there's been some additional modifications and attempting to be more conforming is an example of a developer really trying to appease the community, but also trying to bring much-needed density and housing to, you know, to our city and to a particular community. I don't really have many things that I would suggest that are augmented. I know we have certain controls that go forward when we look at these things and certain things that will get phased, and I do think that will play a huge role in the success of the project. I'm really glad to have it clearly identified what areas will become public and have public access. That was one of my, one of my questions. I couldn't really discern that easily from the map beforehand. I do think that this level of density does help support the proposed commercial space. And most often, in my involvement and engagement in that community, something that is often requested is the level of commercial activity and commercial viability to bring those amenities to that community that they've longed for, and they see other communities have pop up almost instantaneously without as much deliberation or debate because it's perceived that those areas can support it. And here you have a case or instance where you can make the case that they'll be supported by adjacent development, and I think it will support the extended community. So with that being said, with the amount of activity at this intersect in the community, I think it's something that's overdue, and I think it's, I think it'll be exciting to see it start to take shape and the way the community embraces it with, again, the multitude of options that it will provide, not only to people that will live on a site like this in the future, but also those that neighbor the site.
Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Chair, and appreciates staff having an additional community meeting. I know the original community meeting, it sounds like, was for, we had some debate last time, but was in fact for a community plan change. It's just that originally it was a much broader application of the neighborhood center version, whereas what came before us last time was to instead have a smaller area of neighborhood center, but introduce a little bit of neighborhood, T3 neighborhood evolving in order to support the multifamily. I know I had a lot of questions last time about if you did have multifamily in a transect too, what would it actually look like and how would that differ? So I appreciate Logan explaining that last time. Went back and reread the T2 Community Character Manual because I have 3, 4, 5, and 6, but don't have a lot of 2. So went back and read that more carefully in preparation for this meeting. I'm pretty, I thought it was a great plan before. What I like about it is that I think that when folks are wanting to preserve the kind of rural character of Whites Creek, I think this plan does that really well by having the things that are on the border really mimic that character, but still allowing for what I think is very well-screened multifamily to be in the center where it would really not be visible even from the perimeter of the property. I like that aspect. I like the fact that this plan, I agree with Commissioner Henley, that this plan does a little bit better job of delineating public versus private access to some of those greenway trails. We obviously see a lot of tree preservation. I like the way that this focuses on the meadowland along the creek bed. I just think it's a really well-done plan. One of the things we talked about last time as well was access to transit. Obviously, there is a bus line on Whites Creek. I think the retail and potential, those kind of uses are supported by this. There obviously is a convenience center or a gas station across the street, which I'm sure people will use that too, but technically that's commercial and technically you can buy coffee and food there. But having actual shops in this development, I think will introduce some things that we have heard from the community that they want, and at a good location that is also convenient to transit. So I'm in support of this plan. I think it's very well done. In terms of the height, I appreciate Commissioner Haines's point. What it looks like to me is that the way the topography is, scales down that for the buildings, if you're along the private street or private driveway that's closest to the tree preserves, they will look like three-story buildings. It's not that those buildings, it's not that the, it's not that an additional story is being tacked on on the back. It looks like it's just the topography slopes down so that it's more of an exposed basement. So I, from my standpoint, I appreciate that point, but from my standpoint, from the, from looking, if when we're looking back toward those buildings from the point of the single-family homes to the north, those would be two stories. The building next to them would be a three-story. And that building actually is a screening versus the one behind it. So I think that it is still pretty well-screened from the, from the single-family lots that are introduced by Buildings 3 and 4, from my perspective. So I appreciate that concern, but I think from the topo standpoint, that that is, that's what's causing the height. It's not that we're tagging an additional floor on the backside of those buildings. So I think this is very well-done, and I'm inclined to support the staff recommendation on both A and B, but we'll listen to what other commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was the one struggling with T3 neighborhood evolving policies appropriate for the District 3 where the multifamily housing is proposed. So since then, I have been contemplating, and the reason I thought it was, it would be appropriate for a T2 neighborhood center policy entirely, the reason being is sometimes SP does not come through and the policy survives. But since, you know, this SP for the most part, it's really thoughtful, the building placement, orientation, preservation, and street connection, and walkway, all the element is very thoughtful. So I think this plan is good. So my concern was that height, if T2 allow three-story height, neighborhood center, T2NC policy might be appropriate. Then after, I have been really contemplating myself, but what if, if we put that kind of orientation and massing and form in other T2, you know, center? So that's kind of other side of the coin. So seems like in this T2, building height and massing is one-story, two-story. Maybe backside will be probably seeing three stories. So seems like that massing and form in T2 is appropriate, but compared to that, T3 is a little higher and considering, you know, basement level. So for that, you know, the other side of the coin, I'm now coming to, yes, indeed, in this instant, you know, T3 neighborhood evolving policy will more appropriate to accommodate those height and massing and orientation. So I believe the policy change, staff recommendation, is pretty reasonable. And as for the SP, I have really, once again, you know, Commissioner Haines touched on it, technical question, because SP not state, you know, District 3 multi-housing, it says up to three-story and 52 feet in height. So that means, for example, like a building C1 and C2, you mentioned these are split level. So from the street side, like west side, it looked like four- So from the street side, e- like west side, it looked like four-story. So from that four-story from the street side, what's the height? Is it 52 from that street side or 52 feet plus, uh, basement?
So it is, excuse me, um, height would be measured as it is measured by the zoning code, which is from finished grade to the four, it's from the four corners average. Um, and so the, you could have spots of that that are over, but it's, it's an, it's an average, is how it's measured in the, in the code.
So in that sense, so west side, that's 52 feet, because three-story 52, so that each side is a three-story, but...
Right, it's, it's total, three stories, 52 feet total as measured by the zoning code, which is you take the four corners at the final grade and those heights from final grade to the top are averaged. And that's how 52, and then, then that's the, that's how the height is measured.
So including the basement?
Yes.
What do you call, okay.
Yes, from finished grade to the, to the top, from finished grade to the top.
Okay, so just because it's a four-story does not give extra height?
By this, by the code, this is considered three stories, but it is measured from finished grade to the top.
Okay, just want to make you sure because, you know, 52 feet, uh, you know, measured from three-story side and then four-story, and it will give additional 10 feet, that would be kind of too tall. So that was my biggest concern. But I'm with, uh, you know, Commissioner Haynes, I would love to see more, a little bit, uh, you know, height difference in that section, C2, from C1 to C, C4, to give better transition to single-family, one-story, 35 feet. So if it can be accommodate, I am very much in favor of that, you know, as far as SP to give better transition. But on the other side, you know, Briiley Park side, I think three-story 52 would be appropriate because it would be kind of buffer to, towards, you know, uh, traffic coming from Briiley. And one last thing I would like to hear is I am concerned about the, um, the traffic, but I think traffic report says now you're gonna align green with a new private, uh, street, and then the roundabout is proposed. But sounded like traffic, uh, report is recommending if further improvement is necessary, you know, this development will accommodate such as a traffic light at the Briiley, uh, Park Gray, uh, that section. So would that be a considered one of the, uh, condition?
Yes, NDOT gave me a, a helpful cheat sheet on the improvements, and both of the Briiley off-ramps would be analyzed for a signal at the time of the development, uh, of this development, as well as the 150th lot of the Ridge Crest, uh, development that's nearby on Night Drive. So both of these developments in the area are required to analyze the, um, those off-ramps for potential signals.
Thank you. So with that condition and improvement, you know, future opportunity for the, uh, street improvement, I think, uh, this plan is well-thought-out, and I, I am in favor with the policy change for the, you know, aforementioned reason.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Um, as Commissioner Haynes, it was, uh, I was able to, uh, watch it, and, um, actually it was probably even better for me because I was able to pause and re- look back. So I was able to really pay a lot of attention to what, um, not only the, my fellow commissioners were saying, but also the, the audience, people who came up, the residents and, as well as the councilperson who, the councilperson actually, uh, Council Campbell, I should, um, I think her, how she started was very compelling actually, and helped me really kind of paint the picture going forward with it. And, um, let me first kind of start with, I thought that, I, I do like the diversity of opportunities for, and I think sometimes you don't think about that, and I was realizing that this area, someone brought up, I think maybe you did, how you have to go to the suburbs to get this type of, um, uh, you know, choices. So it's great, you know, that we have these choices within our, um, within our area as well, especially in this. So I, I, as far as just, is this, you know, the use of it, I actually think is very needed. And so, once I kind of got past that, uh, I did want to double-check the, you know, policies and how it was kind of set up and what this, because it's different. And, um, I, you know, agree with, especially how the applicant described it as far as how it was, you know, still would be a consistent, and it wasn't a, wasn't a drastic change from what was already, uh, you know, for, when put up with Nashville Next. Um, so, you know, kind of as I went through, and I won't even repeat because I think you actually still broke it down very detail and won't go through all the specific details of it, but I like the way it was varied out. I think the site plan works well with the way the, uh, the site is and the slopes of it. Um, unlike Commissioner Haynes, I'm not as concerned about the height actually because the apartment, I just moved out of apartments for seven years, and, you know, it also had three stories and two stories, but when you looked at it, really didn't see a lot of the differences, you know, as far as, so I didn't really feel as, um, uh, that you had this, you know, this massive change going from one spot to the other. And, and I'm actually, would, might be even a little concerned about if we chose those and didn't choose others. So I'd have to really see it three-dimensionally before I start wanting to try and change that and really kind of see what the elevations really look like, especially when you're dealing with a slope site, you know, as, um, Councilman Withers brought up, you know, that you, you're gonna have to think about all of that. So I'm kind of reluctant to make those changes, at least without knowing more about it. So anyway, um, I was in support of it after I watched it, and it was, it was great watching everybody in action. And, um, I'm still in support. I appreciate the, my fellow commissioners', um, responses, and I'm willing to make a motion on the first one. I know we may want to talk about the second one, but I can make a motion on the first one.
Sure.
So I make motion to approve, da-da-da, uh, I'll just say 24A.
24A, okay, okay. Proper motion. Any other discussion on item 24A? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, and the next item?
I'd like to motion to approve the next one, B.
24B?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries.
Do we have to have six for the second one?
Yes, we're good. We're going to lose one commissioner, but I think we're still good. And, um, we will move on with item 27.
So can I make one quick suggestion, um, on a concern about this area that we just talked about? Um, I think Lucy and her staff could get bombarded with other cases in this area between Briiley and Buena Vista, because it's going to continue to evolve. And I think we need to ask them to study the infrastructure to make sure that it can support this continued evolving area. I don't think it needs to be a hot-button item to do next month, but we're gonna see, we're gonna see more cases in this particular area. Um, you know, in one of the comments at the first hearing, we talked about a holistic, holistic study. I don't think we need that, but I do think we need to make sure that the city has the adequate infrastructure from Briiley to Buena Vista to accommodate this evolving area. So how we go about that, Lucy, I'll leave up to you and your team to come back the next meeting and give us an update, but I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, good point. Oh goodness. Okay, we'll reconvene in one second, once we get everyone situated. Okay, are you, are we ready to get started with item 27? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm Dustin Shane, Staff Planner. Item 27 is a SP on Hamilton Church Pike. This is a request to rezone from AR2A and R15 to SP to permit a multifamily residential development. Our recommendation is to approve the conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Zoning on the site right now, uh, the northern part is R15, the southern part is AR2A. Uh, policy is mostly T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, but there's a bit of conservation covering a stream that runs across the property. Here's the layout that's proposed. Um, you can see a new public road proposed from Hamilton Church going, uh, north to an extension of Painter Drive, which is gonna go across, uh, and stub out to the east. So this is for 111 multifamily units on about 13 acres, so about eight units an acre, uh, both detached in the southern half and townhomes in the northern half. Height will be capped at three stories and 45 feet with basements. Um, parking will be provided with garages, driveways, service parking. As I said, there would be an extension of Painter Drive, um, to provide stub out to the east, um, and this is in line with the, the connectivity goals of the MCSP. Water quality will be handled interior to the site, and then code-required buffers will, uh, be around the perimeter. So staff finds it's consistent with the goals of T3 neighborhood evolving, uh, which calls for suburban character, but, uh, allows more density and, uh, varied character, and, uh, caps height at three stories. Uh, it will be pedestrian-oriented with sidewalks, moderate setbacks, and street trees, and as I said, um, the new public infrastructure we're getting will accomplish, uh, goals of the MCSP. So our recommendation is to approve the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Does he want to come forward? You will have 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes for rebuttal, and, um, just ask that you start with your name and address.
Sure. Jared Cunningham, Catalyst Design Group, 5100 Tennessee Avenue. Um, as mentioned, there's, um, pretty significant, um, public infrastructure improvements here with public roads, extension through the site, um, off of Hamilton Church, trying to be good stewards and align with the major collector street plan. Um, believe we've worked with staff, um, tried to address all comments possible. We've had several, um, community meetings, I believe, um, some representatives from the community will speak to the cemetery. Um, I think during the initial process, it was, uh, believed that the cemetery was a part of the site, and actually, in hindsight, we discovered it was, it was not a part of the site. However, in retrospect, we are, um, and as discussed with the community representative, we are, um, open and, um, will commit to, um, some additional items that she'll discuss, um, to make sure that any, um, enslaved graves are located, try to go, um, above and beyond what has already been done to address the family cemetery. Um, with that, uh, we'll reserve the rest of our time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is anyone here speaking in support of the project? Anyone speaking in opposition?
I still don't like the choice of opposition and support.
Okay.
Tonichek, Kane Ridge Community Club. We happened to get an email from them back about the time that Metro Historic was starting work on the cemetery grant that they had gotten, and discovered that the Painter Cemetery, also known as the Pig Cemetery, was listed as being on this property. So that's what he's referring to, and, uh, they got together with Metro Historical pretty quickly. Um, there is, in our opinion, more that needs to be done with that because of our experiences with cemeteries in this general area, um, having, uh, more graves than are initially discovered. Uh, so part of what we are asking for, for all sites that potentially have cemeteries, uh, on this one will be a, a good access to it, making sure that there's a place to pull over and, and have access, and that there is, uh, delineation by a licensed archaeology, archaeology company, because so many times the people that start running the big heavy equipment, they don't know. They don't know the signs that might tell them there's a cemetery there. They don't know what Vinka is, they don't know what flathead stones are, or just basic markers, or no markers. We would like there to be, um, some educational placards whenever possible on cemeteries. We would like to have broader boundaries than what the law actually calls for, which is only 10 feet, and many times we've found that 10 feet doesn't encompass the whole of the cemetery. Um, we'd like context preservation where possible, and any cemetery restoration to occur with MTSU's Center for Historic Preservation. We're asking for the, the ground radar to make sure of where the actual boundaries are, and that if there happens to be any unintended disturbance, that DNA testing occurs, because that is the only chance. When you're doing the re-interment, that's it. That's your one, one chance to do that. Um, if there is fencing, we want it to be period-appropriate historical fencing, not throwing up a big chain link fence, and maintenance that doesn't damage the markers, and that's pretty easy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking in opposition on this item? Seeing none, uh, you have your two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I think as mentioned, we're willing to, um, go through with all those things. I think we're willing to work with, continue to work with Historic, and, um, we will, we will definitely do what's right, and we, we can follow through with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The councilperson. Is a councilperson here for this item? I don't think so. Okay, well, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and, uh, Commissioner Tibbs, start with you.
I was actually just about to say, did I understand, if I may ask, that, um, did I understand then that you are willing to get the archeo- archaeology?
Archaeologist?
Yeah, archaeologist, that study that the, uh...
Yes, one, I think, uh, prior to moving forward to the final SP, we're definitely open to doing that.
Okay. Those, I did think that was appropriate to do with, uh, cemetery so close by, so I, that was a good comment. Um, but otherwise, I'm in support of this.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, so it's great, uh, especially, uh, applicant is committed to preservation of the historic site, like historic cemetery, and do the archaeology, uh, study prior to, uh, you know, disturbance. So if we can add that as a condition, because it's not in our condition, uh, that would be great. And I think, uh, so everything else seemed to be covered, and I'm in support with that condition.
Great, thank you. Councilman Withers?
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, I think this is a good plan. Went out to check out Painter Drive, went out to check out that site. Um, I'm always a fan of, um, co- connectivity, and so I think it's great to, not only to extend the street, but also to provide a new connection, frankly, for those neighbors to get out to Hamilton Church. I think that's, that's good to create more cross-connectivity, particularly, um, as it comes around there behind the elementary school. I think that's a really good asset for neighborhood connectivity that's provided. Um, and other than that, I can't improve upon, uh, my esteemed peers who have served on the Historic Zoning Commission, so I appreciate their comments, but I'm in support of staff recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Henley?
Yes, I, I won't echo too many of the things. I did have the, one of my requests or suggestions, I guess, was going to be to make that, um, you know, additional, um, condition on archaeological study and, and having some oversight. I, I do like the plan. I think, you know, looking at the site in, in aerial and understanding the, the distance that's actually covered and the amount of infrastructure that's going in place, it is a significant, um, investment. Um, and, and again, you know, we have made it part of our, our, our goals and plans is to look at connectivity. Um, and I think this is one that, really is one that I was actually excited to see, very odd-shaped piece of property. Um, I do like the, the, the maximization of the areas that seem to be outside of impacted areas, and I think we'll get a better idea of what those impacted areas, uh, may be with, with additional considerations from, from an archaeological standpoint. So I support the plan. Um, again, it's, it's great to see, um, housing coming to an area that was pretty much landlocked and kind of cut off from, uh, a lot of the access to the community. and kind of cut off from a lot of the access to the community. So I'm excited to see what it'll look like going forward.
Sounds great. Commissioner Henley Haynes.
So for clarification purposes, where is this cemetery that they keep referencing? If y'all could just point that out.
So I don't think we can point with any sort of pointer, but if you, so the plan has been reoriented with this slide. But if you look on the left-hand side of the slide where the entrance drive is, if you see the notched out portion where that is not included in the plan, just to the south of the entrance drive, that is what has been identified as the location. Does that make sense where I'm pointing?
So...
Upper left corner?
Right there.
Yeah, I can't. I wish I could point at something on the screen, but I don't think I can. Hold on just a second.
But we have determined that this cemetery is outside the boundary of their property lines?
They have excluded what is believed to be the entire extent of the cemetery outside of the SP. I think some of the comments were to make sure that the full extent has been protected, but they have excluded what is believed to be the full extent.
Okay. Well, as long as we add that condition. I have unfortunately encountered graves as we are digging accidentally, and it does cause heartburn for all involved. So if we can add that condition, then I'll support the plan.
Yeah, and there are also state regulations. It's this part here, the little corner piece, that sort of little notched out piece. And there are state regulations. If they were to find a grave that wasn't identified prior to construction, then there are state standards with how you...
Deal with that.
How you handle those situations, yes.
Okay, well, we need a motion. If anybody wants to do it.
May I get clarification?
Yes.
I feel like we're in a Kabuki show over here, like, okay. So just so I'm clear, because I've heard a sense of the commission that you're interested in a condition. There are state standards, but if we wanted to add a condition, I think Lisa, with some advice here, please don't press the button. I'm scared it's gonna... It could be prior to final issuance of final SP, we would recommend the completion of an archaeological survey?
If I might suggest, potentially, that prior to final site plan approval, they continue to work with the community in regards to signage, survey, and fencing of cemetery, yes.
Does continue working with strong enough, or do we have to require such be submitted?
We'll check in and make sure that they do before final, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, commissioners, anybody feel like making a motion? Or any other discussion before we make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the condition that Lisa just added.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. We are on to item 33, I mean 30.
Hey, Dustin Shane, staff planner. This is an SP at 110 Fairway in Donaldson. It's a request to permit 19 multifamily residential units. Our recommendation is to approve of conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Current zoning on the site is R10. The policy on the site is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. Here's a look at the site plan they're proposing. It's an L-shaped property. They're proposing a private street to come off of Fairway and go in and up the property with detached residential units fronting that street, and then fronting a open space in the rear. And then there's an existing historic home on the front of the property there at Fairway.
Quite a word. That's number 30, not number, uh, this is 40, not number 30.
This is 30.
Yeah, we're on item 30.
So this is 19 multifamily units at about six units an acre. Style will be detached and feature a cottage-style aesthetic. There's going to be an interior open space that many of the units face, and then also landscape buffers around the perimeter with the single-family area that will be per code. The existing historic home at Fairway is going to be retained. Height is being capped at two stories and 38 feet, and then also requirements being put on for pitch roofs. This is to help these smaller units fit in with the existing neighborhood character. As I said, there'll be a private road come off of Fairway that will provide access. It's going to have on-street and surface parking. So staff finds that it furthers several goals of the T3 neighborhood maintenance policy, which does call for suburban character, but allows more density and variety certainly in infill situations like this. That policy limits height usually to three stories. Here, we're limiting even more so at two stories with the pitch roofs. It is more intense than the surrounding area, but it is also adjacent to a Tier 1 center and the downtown Donaldson overlay. So the T3 neighborhood maintenance policy does allow for transitions and intensity, especially when you have a situation like this where it abuts directly a Tier 1 center. And also, when property is shaped such it is like this, it doesn't really suit itself to the R10-style development with individual lots. And then so also the conditions we put on, as I said, with the architecture will help it to blend in with the area. So our recommendation is to approve with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Hi, you'll have 10 minutes, and you can hold two minutes back for rebuttal, and start with your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Gina Emanuel, Centric Architecture, 1206 Buchanan Street. So a few notes about this property. It's about 110,000 square feet in the middle of this neighborhood. Currently has one home on it that was noted at the front. It borders the Publix Shopping Center on one of its longest sides. It's directly adjacent to Sub District 2, as Dustin noted, in downtown Donaldson UDO, and it's about 800 feet from Lebanon Pike. So the site, the current zoning allows approximately 17 units, and we're asking for 19, including, that's including the historic home. And we're looking at this large property that transitioned from that more commercial corridor back toward the neighborhood. One thing we looked at earlier was if we built four to five homes on this property, we would have more square footage than what is currently shown on this plan. So we are maintaining the historic house. We're providing buffers to all the adjacent properties. We're including more than 30% of the property as green space, so we can create a walkable community. And we feel this pattern of housing creates something a little bit more attainable. It's a really wonderful neighborhood. It's a large existing lot, and we talk about middle housing a lot. And something as a city we discuss frequently, but we don't often see it in practice. And we think this is a really great place to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? We'll keep your two minutes.
Hi, my name is Maria Moth. I'm a partner, I'm a general partner of HJL Properties. And I just, I live in this neighborhood. I have my whole life. I've never lived anywhere else. We have also developed mostly adaptive reuse, but some new construction along the Lebanon Road Corridor and McGavick Pike in that area. So existing tenants that we have are Nectar, Irving Cantina, Sunflower, Chase Bank, Tenfold Brewery, et cetera. And I take it with great pride that we are trying to keep the integrity and character of our community as development is encouraging. And so a lot of this is the single, they're single-family cottage-style type houses and such would be made to look very similar to the community and to try to maintain the character.
Reading Planning Commissioners, Patrick Napier, 710, Frida Villa, Madison, Tennessee. One other point I would like to make that wasn't mentioned in the staff's analysis is that this area is identified as transition and infill in the Nashville Next Concept Map. So while the T3 policy also notes as this is an appropriate area for transition, so does the Nashville Next Concept Plan, which was one of the guiding principles of the Nashville Next Community Character Manual. With that, we thank the staff for their analysis and thank the planning commissioners for their service.
Thank you. Is there anyone here speaking in support of this project? Thank you for coming down this evening.
Yes, thanks for having us.
You'll have two minutes and start with your name and address.
My name is Chuck Goodman. I am resident owner of 105 Fairway Drive, lifelong Donaldson resident. I'm blessed to be back in the home that I grew up in. I've been in Donaldson a long time, and very familiar with what we used to call the Eeks family, HJL Properties. I had never met Maria before they held the community meeting, where they invited us all. So with that being said, I've had the opportunity to look out my front door and see a property that she owns. Now, it is a single-family rental home. What we're talking about here may not be a little bit different, but I've seen firsthand with the integrity and the heart that she has with upholding the neighborhood. Like she said, she's lived there. I've lived there my whole life. I've watched the community grow. And I think this would be good, and that we should count our blessings, that it's not crazy big stupid money coming from New York City and coming in here and doing something that would just be not good for our community. And so I count it as lucky to have HJL and Maria involved with moving forward with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, how are you? I'm Michelle Mizzou. I'm also a resident of Donaldson. I'm also a local Realtor and specialize in residential real estate in the Donaldson area. Two points I wanted to make and why I support this. One is the people who are leading it, the Eeks family, the HJL family, are amazing community members. They go above and beyond in their other developments to do things like even consider green infrastructure and have really, really improved the livability of the community. And the other thing I wanted to say is that as a residential real estate agent, this kind of development is so desired and so needed. And I have so many people come to me all the time looking for single-level walkability, green space. These, the items that they've included are exactly what people are looking for. So this is why I support it, and I hope you guys do too.
Thank you very much. Anybody else speaking in support? We'll have you go after the, well, whoever comes next. Do we have any, so no one else speaking in support? How about speaking in opposition?
Hello, I live on 108 Fairway Drive, which is next to the proposed development, 1010 Fairway Drive. I agree with praise for the HJL business owners. They're taking care of their tenants and so forth, but I do have a couple of issues with the proposed development on basis, on which basis I strongly oppose. The main concern is high-density housing and traffic congestion. Squeezing 18 houses within a three-acre area is not consistent with the historic character of this neighborhood, the land and green space enjoyed by its residents. It would also cause incredible traffic congestion on Fairway and Lebanon intersection, just 800 feet from the proposed site. Consider this, 18 houses times two cars minimum per household equals 36 cars driving every single day in and out, slowing or blocking already heavily traveled Fairway Drive. A completely new two-way private street with additional parallel parking area will be built immediately next to the existing driveway on 108, which is my driveway. I would also like to add for your information that the dividing line between the commercial area, the former food line area now Publix, and the residential area was set by the previous agreement between the neighbors and the owner of that commercial property, resulting in the creation of the Hill of Separation, if you will. The green buffer consisting of the hill and trees on top of it, it is still standing. The proposed development completely disregards disagreement and physical borderline between the commercial and residential areas and aggressively encroaches on the residential. Please reconsider your design by at least reducing significantly the number of households you want to build.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We do need to get your name for the record.
Ms. Rasmussen, Deka Rasmussen, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Please come forward.
Okay, you don't want the blind guy messing up with your buttons.
No, no, you're good. You're good.
First of all, I want to thank the gentleman over there, right? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, but for explaining some of this in a lot more detail than we got in our original meeting. Councilman Syracuse will tell you that the original, the only meeting we've had has been quite spirited. You know what was mentioned there, but the other statement that was made during that meeting was that we were also informed that this zoning was not accomplished. HJL could just sell the lot, and we might get something even worse. Many people, I don't think, showed up today because they considered that intimidation. 18 small units, that's quite a big, at first, they did take out the dog park. That would be a good thing. If you just kept the present zoning, it would take it down just a couple of houses. And I don't, the answer to that was, well, we couldn't make enough money out of that. The parcel, these properties in touches or borders, nine residential properties, and five, within a few feet of five others. That's quite a bit of impact on a neighborhood that size. The other problem is through traffic, it's been a problem. We've tried to address it with traffic calming, but there's a constant problem with the traffic on our street, Maple Crest and Selma. Right in the middle of all this is Stanford Elementary School. It took us about five minutes to get out of our driveway today, when school was letting out. There's no reason to think so. Our concerns have to do with safety, noise, services, drainage, and quality of life. And has anyone explored the possibility of an exit or an entrance through the crossing center? I know it would take a little negotiation and probably some digging and moving around of things, but it would involve at least the problem of the driveway issue on the Fairway. Thank you.
Thank you. We need your name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay.
My name is James Oldham. My wife lives with me, thank God. And we're across the street on Fairway Drive, 113. We've lived there since 1991, and we're both native Nashvivians.
Great, thank you so much for coming down. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
First, my name's Bob Schwartz. And this is the first time I've been in a situation like this, so I'm quite intimidated. The two before me basically said most of what I wanted to say, in that there's an amazing amount of traffic. And Jim was just talking about Stanford School, and he's right. It, Fairway Drive has become that funnel. And I don't see how we're going to get to work. I don't see how we're going to be able to deal with it if they don't come up with an additional exit out of there. It's just a project that, to me, that was not really well thought out, and there's an awful lot of houses to deal with. So that's where I am on it, and I'll be, I'm living right across Fairway Drive from the private street entrance. So I don't know if they're going to have to put a stoplight right in the middle of that, of Fairway Drive. Of course, there's a fire station on a corner, and that would very much inhibit their travel. I just wish you guys would consider the number of houses and the difficulty in... I just wish you guys would consider the number of houses and the difficulty in the traffic situation. It's really, I wish one of you all would go out there and just look at it and see what we're talking about. I know it's easy for you guys to just say, okay, yes or no. I mean, it's not, you don't do that, but what your votes are have amazing and very, very long-lasting consequences to those around us. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
You know, we need your address.
111 Fairway Drive.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not Syracuse? Okay, we'll have the applicant come back with your two minutes rebuttal, and then Councilman Syracuse.
We would like to address the concerns about the entrance and exit and the overall traffic impact of Fairway, so we're definitely open to doing an access study and having that be a condition of approval submitted with the final SP to make sure that we won't put any undue impact on the neighborhood and the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Syracuse?
I'm not touching a button. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate all my neighbors, as always, coming out, both for and against. We did have a good, well-attended meeting, probably 50-plus people at the meeting, so it was very informative. I think Centric has done an amazing job on this design. As you heard, it's about one or two homes extra than what is currently allowed under base zoning. It keeps the historic home there. It's good infill, as has been mentioned, just north of a Publix, right next to the downtown Donaldson urban design overlay. So it's good quality infill, as you heard from Michelle also. It's very much needed housing, and so it's not really high-density, and I think it does fit in very well and blends. So of the 50-plus people that were at that meeting, a lot were really in favor of this, and especially you have a third-generation Donaldsonian who is doing this development. This is not, as you heard from Chuck earlier, this is not somebody from the outside coming in wanting to sell and get out. This is a third-generation Donaldson neighbor wanting to do this and help maintain the character and quality of the neighborhood, so very much in support. Thank you.
Thank you. That, I will declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Henley, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Chair. I think most of my fellow commissioners know I have affinity for projects that are in this scale and definitely try to address our need for housing. I think what I am, you know, I was pleased to read as I was reading through this is the existing structure remaining, and I know that has a pretty strong impact to the community character, especially for the neighbors that showed up. And I do want to thank the members of the community, the neighbors, for coming, especially, it sounds like you've not had to do this before, and so just want to express that appreciation, express the appreciation for the council member for staying and providing insight as well. I do think, having done projects like these and interacting with community members, particularly those that are immediately adjacent, you know, some of the concerns of the neighbors, I think there, especially on an SP, I think there is an opportunity to find ways to potentially alleviate some of those concerns or make strides to do so. There's no guarantees, but I'm curious and have a couple of questions. I think one of them was addressed in the rebuttal, which was potential consideration to modifications around access for the site, and I was thinking of that as the presentation was being given. I can tell likely by the scale of the project, no traffic impact study or anything like that was required. So I do appreciate that being something voluntarily done by the developer. I do have a question about our opportunity or ability to look at the buffer, and particularly the buffers to the north of the private street, because I think that's the, one of the main areas of concern that I heard, and understanding that there is kind of a natural tree buffer there. I drove there. You cannot access the area that would be the parallel parking and things today, and I was not going to trespass on anyone's property. But I do think, having done projects like this before, the removal of some of that tree canopy is a really significant concern, and understanding that there's a commitment in the buffers to place plantings in those, but I would like for it to be stated what some of our ability is to direct what that looks like in terms of vegetation and scale and volume.
Certainly. So there's a consistent width of buffer that's shown along the northern property line, and then as you move, it becomes, you know, sort of a different property line. But there's a consistent width buffer that's shown along that with more significant plantings adjacent to the existing home that's on Fairway. So you can see sort of two designations, and it might be hard to see, but there's a box sort of around an area of the buffer that's adjacent to the existing home that's just to the north where it says B buffer. And so that would be a heavier landscaping, and then the remainder, so sort of acknowledging that where it's adjacent to the home, that is a B buffer, and then the remainder is an A buffer. And so the width stays the same, just the density of the plantings would be different between the two areas, trying to get more adjacent to where the existing home is.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. That was exactly what I was hoping you would say and refer to. And I listened to my fellow commissioners, but I do think potentially looking at that context of buffer B extending along that edge that, you know, does border all those properties, particularly when you think about parallel parking, light shed, noise shed from cars, I do think it would make a bit of difference, and so I would suggest that. But I like the plan a lot. I do think the scale of the plan, unlocking property that's historically been landlocked for housing is fantastic.
So I am being told by Dustin that there is a condition to meet code requirements for buffering, which would actually require that entire to be a B. It's just not reflected on the plan yet, but it is included in the condition, so done.
Great, easy. Before I cede my time, I do want to, I think she just left, but I did want to acknowledge Twana for coming previously and making the comments that she did with one of the previous cases. I think it's important when somebody comes in and speaks up for the community and the historic character there as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, I appreciate everyone coming out today. I am familiar with the street. I have a good friend that lives on Fairway and went out again as part of my site visits. Councilmember Syracuse and I sit kind of next to each other in the council, and we had a Publix that was proposed in East Nashville that fell through in 2007. We finally got it open a couple of years ago, and Councilmember Syracuse used to joke with me, he's like, can you please go ahead and get your Publix open so that your folks will stop driving to mine? So I hope that's helped some of the traffic. But in all seriousness, I think that this is, it is an unusual lot and an ideal location immediately adjacent to a Tier One Center. When we talk about needing the missing middle housing, this seems like a really good idea, version of that, particularly with limiting it more to cottage-style houses. I do think there are sidewalks that are on the street are relatively new, which is a great asset to have. One question that I had, and I don't know if staff could answer that or the applicant, but one of the things I was looking for in the site plan is how many total parking spaces are provided? Or does the applicant have to know role?
It's required to meet code per the UZO standard as a minimum, not no parking.
Right.
Which was recently passed, but as a minimum. So it would be, if it's one-bedroom, one unit, two spaces, yeah.
Okay. And like I say, I mean, I noticed that there are no garages in this because pulling the garages do tend to increase the height, but it also doesn't, sometimes what we see with a site plan is that you look at the land and most of it is actual surface parking, and it looks like that's not the case with this. It seems like with the parallel parking that at a minimum helps to reduce the impervious surface area and kind of streamline it a little bit so that it does preserve a lot of green space in the site. So I think that's pretty good. Overall, it has good sidewalks that do connect to that sidewalk on Fairway, and hopefully if we discourage people from having lots and lots of cars on this site, that that will help to minimize the traffic impact. And I also think that it enhances the walkability of the area, which I know is important with the Donaldson design plan. So I think this is a pretty good site plan. It's great to have added housing, particularly close to schools like that, because hopefully we can get more enrollment in some of our schools. That's always a good thing to have. So I think it's a good site plan, and I'm in support of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Ben Abachir. I do understand why this type of proposal is coming to this particular parcel. I mean, it is a really unique location and a unique parcel. I think one thing that bothers me is, do we have, as far as policy-wise, this is a T3 neighborhood maintenance policy, right next to T4 community center policy. Is there like a T3 transitional policy? Do we have those kind of policy?
So we do have a transition policy, but a transition policy probably goes a little bit further in that it allows office and multi, and probably higher-density residential. So I think that one of the things that the Community Character Manual does is it sort of acknowledges that you have situations where you might run into a more intense policy adjacent to a less intense policy or sort of these odd shapes, which, so it does give some flexibility when you're at those seams of where policies meet. So we do have transition policy, but it would allow office uses or, and those types of uses.
Thank you. Yeah, I totally understand it, you know, the reason, and I think we do need these kind of, you know, different type of housing stock. I do appreciate that thought. It's just, you know, not, we don't have that tool to kind of have, allow those kind of, and then it's neighborhood maintenance. And of course, if this proposal is in the middle of the neighborhood, we would not even consider. I think we are considering it because of it's a unique location. So I think, just want to, don't want to make any precedent of that, and I just want to make you sure if we were to, seems like, you know, other commissioners were in favor of those plan, but if we were ending up uplooming it, just kind of some kind of safeguard, just not having those kind of things in the middle section of the neighborhood maintenance. So we have to have like a thoughtfulness because of this is a unique location and tied to this SP, therefore, in this instance, this policy associated, this development associated this policy is appropriate, those can, you know, assure us. So that is my concern, and other landscaping buffer and access study was already mentioned with this condition. I think the plan is becoming better, but that is my only kind of pet peeve.
Commissioner Tibbs?
You had me at saving the historic house. But no, I think it's well done. I like how it's tucked behind. I think this, the uniqueness and the character of these smaller homes will be well-welcome here, so, and appreciate everyone else's comments, and with that, I'll make a motion to...
Commissioner, I want, I have to mix that. Commissioner Haynes has to have his...
So Donaldson has created this great buzz, and some of it's credit to Councilman Syracuse, some of it's a credit to the longstanding neighborhood. People want to live there. People want to drive from Green Hills to go to Nectar, like my family does, because it's a fantastic restaurant. We had the good fortune to build the Publix. We have since sold it, but to the point about the developers, you know, we are a local developer. This area attracted us. So I think the diversity of the housing stock is fantastic here. I think the trade-off of going from 17 units to 19 units, excuse me, 19, yeah, 17 to 19, but we get an SP to control it, is wonderful. I think this is going to create walkability to the public center. So I think this is a fantastic plan, so with that, I will move approval of staff's recommendation with all conditions.
Okay, clarification director?
I'm like paranoid now about pressing the button. So just to clarify, are we adding a condition regarding the access study to the recommendation? I think the sense of the commission, I would recommend that. Okay, and then to clarify, the how shall remain is in the plan, so that does hold the weight of an SP. If you did want to elevate it for just added transparency, we could add that as a condition, a specific condition written, which would be included in the language of the proposal that goes to council, which I think I would recommend. Okay. All right, so forgive me for interrupting, so would you be all right with those two conditions, sir?
I will amend my recommendation to include those two additional conditions.
Commissioner Tibbs? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I understand there is some food back there. If anyone wants a little break, maybe a five-to-10-minute break, and then we'll try to wrap up our final two items, if that works. Okay, we will turn shortly. And try to finish up our last remaining items. We're going to pick back up with item 33.
Good afternoon, I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. I'm presenting item 33 on behalf of Eric Metravers, who could not attend the meeting tonight. The request is to rezone a 3.69 acre property at 6930 Nolansville Pike from agricultural or AR2A to mixed-use limited alternative or MULA. Staff recommends approval of this request. The property is located on the east side of Nolansville Pike, just north of Old Burkett Road. There are currently two vacant buildings on the property. Adjacent properties are zoned SP on the northwest, CLA and MULA on the south, and SP on the northeast. Adjacent land uses include an assisted-living facility, various commercial uses, and a mix of single-family and multifamily residential. And Mill Creek runs along the west side of Nolansville Pike. The policy for the property is T3NC or Suburban Neighborhood Center. The T3NC policy supports a mix of land uses, including mixed-use buildings. The proposed MULA zoning is consistent with the policy. The requested district supports a mix of residential and non-residential uses and can provide a transition between the residential uses on the north and the commercial uses on the south. So based on the consistency with the T3NC policy, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. So we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If you want to come forward, you'll have 10 minutes. State your name and address, and you may withhold two minutes for rebuttal.
Hello, everyone. Jason Morlock, live at 4611 Robin Lane in Nolansville, Tennessee. We were obviously in agreement with staff. We also believe that this use is appropriate for the property, given the surrounding development. The development to the southeast of us will also have multifamily. I believe they'll have 108 units, and I believe the traditions facility has 134 units. So our density count is in the middle of the density count for the development to the southeast and the development to the northwest. We originally applied for the zone change proposal back in the spring, and as a part of that, the development would have been a car wash on the front along Nolansville Road with the multifamily to the rear. We did have a meeting with a community group, and they were opposed to the car wash. All of the concerns were centered around the car wash, so we heard those concerns and removed the car wash and came forward with the multifamily-only concept. The, I did want to point out, there was a email yesterday that was sent to the commission requesting a deferral, and I did want to point out just a few things from that request. The group that I'm speaking of is Kane Ridge Community Club, and I know that Twana's here and a few of the members are here tonight. We did communicate with them throughout that time period. I have a timeline that I prepared indicating as such. I have a timeline that I prepared indicating as such, and we did ask for a neighborhood meeting several times, and just never got any replies back that they were, wanted to have that meeting. And we're happy to have that meeting now. We were just, we're hoping to move forward with planning commission tonight and keep this project tracking towards, of course, we know we have to go to Metro Council, and we would plan to meet with them in January, and I've indicated that to them, which would be before the second Metro Council meeting, if the project continues to track on that path. I have spoken with Councilman Rutherford. I spoke with him yesterday, and I don't, I don't believe he's here, but he indicated to me that he was okay with that plan, but we would definitely need to meet with that group, and we have no issues in meeting with that group. Again, you know, the car wash seemed to be what everyone was against, so we heard that. We removed that from the plan. The MUL, MULA zoning, in fact, will not even support the car wash, so that wouldn't even not be an option in the future if we went with that. Again, I said we can meet with the group in January. We told them we're available. If they'll just give us some dates, we'll work around their availability. Yeah, that's really all I have on this at this point. I can allow others to speak on it and then speak more as needed.
Great. Thank you so much. So, do we have anyone here speaking in support? Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forward, if you know the drill.
Good evening. Twana Chek, Kane Ridge Community Club. We want to be consistent with all developers, which means that rezoning is the time for engagement before it happens. We did have meetings with them about the car wash, but we haven't had the opportunity to meet since a completely new plan was presented. So, we'd like the opportunity to do that before it leaves here tonight and starts a clock that then causes everything to just move too fast. We would like to discuss the residential, the two subterranean levels that it seems like they might be talking about. We're not completely sure that's the plan. The South Point residents, just up there in the construction area, are just getting moved into their homes and haven't had the opportunity to have any engagement about a new development that will perhaps tower over them. We would like to talk about green infrastructure. We would like to talk about how much is going above ground, how much is going below ground, the impervious surface, the environmental stuff, and the access to the rear where there's an alley from South Point. We're really concerned about the access onto Nolansville Pike. There are so many developments going in right here, and every single one of them is gonna be required to pull out onto Nolansville, so we're wanting to talk about that. The bottom line is that we're not ready to start the clock on this development yet. We asked just for a deferral to have these meetings and get some other things ironed out so that we don't stand here in opposition to a project. We think that the January meeting is an appropriate date to ask for a deferral on, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others speaking in opposition?
I'm George Clark. I live just up the top of the hill on the other side of the Pettis Road up there from the property, and I would echo everything that Twana says. She pretty much covers everything. But reiterate the traffic situation on the road. There are frequent periods throughout the day to where that is, you just can't even navigate up and down through there either one way or the other. Everything's coming through between there and Nolansville. Some of my concerns are, that's the county line right there, just across from there, which is Mill Creek there, and what I'm starting to notice that I think is an eyesore, is when you go down the road, you have all this development on this side and nothing on this side. That's another county. There's no transition right there. The people on the hill back there are looking, looking down into all of this construction area and everything that you guys have. The other thing that concerns me is the wildlife that runs up through there, and there are no wildlife corridors, and I would like you guys to start considering something like that, because they're migrating, and we're getting the roadkill and everything else, and it's disgusting to see. It's hurtful to have to see it, and to know that the animals are being displaced. There are places where they can go if they can get through to there and leave, and let them have some of those buffer zones or something where they can get through.
Thank you very much. Others speaking in opposition?
I'm Debbie Buckner, and I live at, on Pettis Road also. I agree with everything that both of them have said. I just wanted to mention that when the first meeting happened, I don't recall anything of, anything other than the car wash. There was no mention of other housing, and I think our community should have the opportunity to have that discussion first before we start the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Others speaking in opposition? If not, if you, if the applicant would like to come back, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
All right. I'll go in, I'll go in sequential order from the last person that was up here, Debbie Buckner. The multifamily was on there. It was at the rear of the property. I will say there's, there are more units now to offset the loss of the car wash, but it still would be compliant with zoning. As far as no development being on the west side of Nolansville Road, without being Mill Creek, without being another county, you know, we really would have no control over that, and this is the main commercial corridor through that area into Nashville and Davidson County. And, you know, the zoning, to me, makes sense, given everything else that's going in around it, and all of this stuff is, went in here recently as well, and I think this is in keeping with the area and what the development that's going in currently. The Nolansville Pike access and doing anything with that alley, there's a lot of topography on that site. Getting to that alley is, it's just not achievable. There's about 45 to 50 feet of topography throughout the site, and the building will be built in a manner that it can work with the topography. That's why we have the parking. There's two levels of parking, below three levels of residential. You would access the lower level near the front of the site where the site is lower. It slopes towards Nolansville Road, and access the upper level of parking further back into the property. As far as green infrastructure, we'll meet any of Metro's requirements. More than likely, we'll do a bio-retention area, and we'll do detention as needed, whether it's surface or subsurface detention to control runoff before, you know, the stormwater leaves our property. Environmental concerns, we will, we, we have, we have much more pervious area on this site than what is required by code. I believe we can save a few trees near the back of the property. Along the sides of the property, there, it's gonna be a little more difficult to save the trees, but we'll do the best we can with the topography that's there.
Okay. Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and Commissioner Johnson, can I start with you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is, I understand the community would like to have involved and with appropriate development in that. So, difficulty is, this is a straight zoning, so even though developer and the community may come up with some kind of agreement, we, as a commissioner, has no authority to enforce it. But having said that, I would like to encourage every single developer coming forward will be very conscientious of community, because that's the plan, because you will be with the community. Zone change is not right. It's not giving. It's a right you will have, but it's not automatically given. So, anyway, so having said that, I, I think as far as, you know, the proposed zone is appropriate for that location, because it proposes residential and, you know, retail, restaurant, and office. So, all this usage is right. So, I would like to see more engagement with the community, and would like to see more, you know, acceptable development with the community, not inconvenient then, would like to see more thoughtful development. But as far as this policy and proposed zone is really suited for that area, so I'm interested to hear the commissioners.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I, I do think this zone change would be appropriate, but I also believe, kind of, as Commissioner Johnson said, that we, we do like the community meetings before this would happen. Maybe if the councilperson, I don't know if they had written anything about it at all for us. I think if I, I mean, if we had that, I'd feel a little bit better, but I'd feel a lot better with some type of community meeting beforehand, at least the councilperson having some, their say-so on it before we moved ahead, so I would support a deferral because of that.
Commissioner Haynes?
I'll echo what Commissioner Tibbs said. I would support a one-minute deferral to get better engagement and get input from the councilperson.
Commissioner Henley?
Well, a couple of things. I think, you know, one, I think it sounds like under maybe a previous iteration of a plan, there was some community engagement, and I think there might have been an attempt to make some more, just may not have happened yet, and I almost feel like I have to channel Commissioner Lawson about our requirement of enforcing of, you know, community engagement before these, these meetings. I don't think that's exactly what the policy says or the requirements are, and this is to be the public hearing. So, I do think, you know, I understand that. I also think we're doing a deferral, and we're coming into the holidays, and so I don't want to set up, you know, the applicant for failure. You know, I know a lot of times I've done community meetings, and then you gauge whether or not that was an effective community meeting because of who showed up, and we're talking about going into the end of December, beginning of January. So, I do think if, just to my fellow commissioners, I do think that is something we should, we should think about. And then, I, I think for me, I'll, I'll echo Commissioner Johnson. I think appropriateness, you know, when we're looking at that for this site, I think there's, you know, proof to the, immediately adjacent that there is and a lot of work that's going on there. I don't necessarily, you know, disagree that we'd like to have a lot more information and to be able to steer the types of development that we want to see. I know, you know, CRCC is very, very fair. They go and, and they bring to all developers in, in their community very similar types of guidelines and requests, and so I commend them for being exactly, you know, uniform in, in that effort. So, you know, I just wanted to put that out there. I'll wait for collective vote from, from my fellow commissioners, but those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Haynes? Oh. Got myself out of order. Councilman Withers.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Rutherford is my vice chair on our Planning and Zoning Committee on the council, and I know that he works very diligently with the community. I would speak in opposition to a deferral. This is a base zone change, as Commissioner Johnston mentioned. I know that the community might want to have more information about the plan, which I understand, but some of the details that the community might want, either A, are already handled by bulk zoning regulations or by stormwater or other regulations of that sort, but things beyond whatevers in regular departmental reviews are not going to be able to be written into the legislation anyway, because it's not an SP. And so, I think that those are important, but this is not maybe like an SP where, where we would want the community to have input opportunities to refine design or some of those elements, that's just not what's before us, because it's not an SP. I also know that Councilmember Rutherford does have a lot of work with, with the community. As I understand it, a bill has not yet been filed, so this would not have a public hearing until February, which does give a little bit of time, certainly if there are additional community concerns. If the public hearing at council were to go forward in February, we, we can listen to that and see if there need, if it needs to come back as an SP or something like that. But at this stage, for us as a planning commissioner, what's before us is not an SP. It's, it's a base zone change. It does meet policy, and I know that Councilman Rutherford will work very closely with the community, so I would not be inclined to support a deferral motion, but would support the staff recommendation at this time. However, I will follow with my vice chair to make sure that he does have those community meetings.
I had just one question, I guess, for staff. I mean, looking at everything around here, it looks like everything is, everything else is an SP, so I'm wondering if, if we gave any consideration to that? I mean, especially given some of the concerns that sound like they were raised at the first set of community meetings?
Certainly. So, immediately to the south, there are properties that are zoned CLA along the front and MULA in the rear, and so you do have sort of a mix of, mix of SP and not SP straight zoning. As you sort of look further to the north along Nolansville Pike, you have large areas of SCC, and so there's, to our minds, the MULA NS, or I'm sorry, MULA was consistent with the policy. Some of the SPs that were included, the one that's immediately to the north where South Point Parkway was built, that inclusion of that new road was part of that SP, and that SP included the residential that was to the rear as well. And so, there were some connectivity goals that, that needed to be achieved there, where there is not that specific need here. There's not really sort of an opportunity for public street connections or those sorts of things. And so, with the A standards being included, which do have the design standards for a single property like this, we are typically comfortable with the straight zoning.
So, everybody's gone. I guess I am looking for a motion. Councilman Withers?
I would move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes. Commissioner Henley? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll vote with the majority. Motion carries. All right. We are on to our last item, which is number 40.
Dustin Chang, staff planner. This is a rezoning on Fairway Drive again at Donaldson. So, request to rezone from OL, OR 20, and R10 to MULA NS. Our recommendation is to approve. Zoning on the site from north to south is R10, OL, and OR 20, three separate pieces of property, and the policy is T4 Urban Community Center. So, the surrounding uses include retail and office zoned CL, a fire station zoned R8, a Publix zoned SCC, and a single-family home zoned R10. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the goals of the T4 Community Center. That policy aims to create urban mixed-use community centers at intersections and within a quarter mile of major commercial and transit corridors. This location's only a few hundred feet north of Lebanon Pike, which is a major transit and commercial corridor. We also find it's consistent with the downtown Donaldson UDO, which covers the site. That UDO has goals of mixed-use and pedestrian orientation, and the MULA zoning, which is proposed, basically mirrors the subd, the sub-district two bulk standards, which the UDO prescribes for this site. So, our recommendation is to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm back. Gina Emanuel, Centric Architecture, 1206 Buchanan Street. This is directly across the street from the one you saw earlier. When we had the community meeting that was mentioned, we looked at this site and the 110 Fairway site together, so that was all discussed as a large. 110 Fairway site together, so that was all discussed as a larger plan. So like Dustin noted, this is in the Donaldson UDO. It is consistent with the policy and the plan. We plan on doing all the things noted from a mixed-use standpoint, and so we felt like this was a simple rezone to MULA NS. Thank you.
Thank you. Others on the team? No? Okay. Well, you have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone speaking in support? Okay.
Hello, again. 105 Fairway Drive. As been noted, the community meeting was spirited, and there were lots of questions, and it was very nice of them to put it together. The architects were there, the engineers were there. It just got to the point to where people were talking over one another. Everybody had lots of questions, including me, especially on this part here, when you hear the words multifamily or apartments. I got concerned at that point. I knew it wasn't going to do that much good to try to get the answers I felt like I deserved at that community meeting. Maria with HJL was kind enough to extend an invitation to everyone there, handed out cards, please email me, come to my office, we'll sit down, we'll have a private conversation. So that's exactly what my neighbor and I did. She was very receptive to us. I had basically two hard-line questions for her. She answered those right off the bat without the blink of an eye, and the rest of our meeting was basically a social, and she was very receptive to everything and very inviting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Also, hello again. I just want to reiterate, the HJL family has done such a great job doing developments like this throughout that corridor just south of there and also to the east, and then down on to McGavick. They've done, they've converted older homes and turned it into great hotspots like Nectar, Urban Cantina, and I have complete faith in them. I'm really excited about this. This is an underutilized area. Again, we're trying to move more towards walkability and less towards car culture, and as a person who's, I'm beautification commissioner and I'm really into green policies, and I see that, you know, creating more walkability is a great move towards the livability of Donaldson, so that's all.
Can we get your name and
Michelle Mazu. Sorry.
And address?
2829 Glen Oaks Drive. That's in Donaldson 37214.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else speaking in support? Anyone speaking in opposition? Come forward again. Name and address, and you have two minutes.
I'll try to remember. Okay. My name is James Oldham. I live at 113 Fairway Drive with my wife Carolyn Davidson. We've been there since 1991. We are the property directly north of the development there. We did attend the meeting. There's a couple of questions I don't understand, and I can't see that, so you may have to help me. The house next to us is 117. There is a vacant lot next to that, which is a small frontage, 119, and then the, on the far corner is a little house, and that is 121. To the south of that, the office is a well-used, excuse me, privately owned by the people that are asking for the change, but publicly accessed road. Most people don't even, it's too, it's wide enough for two people, two cars to go by with some parking in certain areas. Most people don't even know it's not a public road. Let's see, that connects McGavick Pike and Fairway. To me, that seems to provide a, it connects all the businesses there. It provides an, I mean, a way of getting into the businesses that are on that road and an access to the back of the road. That seems to be the best alternative for providing a buffer. The area there, this would seem to be the, have you already got that? Even in consider, even in consideration of the, what Donaldson, downtown Donaldson design overlay, construction of a restaurant and a two-story apartment, which I've just found today, building in an established neighborhood is not a planned development, but a poorly planned intrusion. Can I have just a moment? I'm a little slow at my reading. If you can give me another 30 seconds. Okay. There's, I have no problem with putting houses there, but that's going to be a really intrusion. And I, they said at the meeting that there would be a restaurant. It sounds like the restaurant is going to take one of those historic homes out that we've been so concerned about and put a restaurant beside my house. I really prefer that they didn't do that. There's also, the thing that concerns me most is there is a natural spring that is about 150 feet behind the house at 117. During hard rains, it soaks in the ground, it pools in large surrounding areas, and even to my property on occasion. During the meeting, the owner said they were aware of that. We are concerned that provisions be made to control the drainage of this area so it does not harm my property, and EPA requirements also be made. The other thing I am concerned is about a buffer zone between that property and my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here speaking in opposition? I'll let the applicant team talk once more, and then we'll bring you back up. You have your two minutes for rebuttal.
I would like to address the concern between the gentleman's house and our proposed project for the buffering. MULA would require a C-level buffer between our proposed development and that house based on zoning, and that's all we have.
Thank you. Yeah, I will in a minute. We'll address what the C buffer is once we close the public hearing. Councilman Syracuse?
Thank you. Jeff Syracuse, Councilmember, District 15. So this is squarely in the UDO. As Michelle said, it does create walkability. It creates additional diverse kind of housing that we do need that is directly accessible to the number six line we go. It does have adaptive reuse of, and it saves one of the existing office buildings, and it really does complement the extraordinary work that they've done on the whole block there from Fairway to McGavick. And really, after the Publix, it was this family that has revitalized this part of Donaldson, truly. And so here again, you have a third-generation Donaldsonian family that is going to be adding really a lot of good elements to this area of downtown Donaldson, squarely in the UDO. So I'm certainly very empathetic with my neighbor who lives right there, and so certainly the discussion of the buffer is warranted. But this is going to very much complement the revitalization along this corridor that they've done, and it does add some good housing right next to transit, so I'm supportive of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing closed. Just quickly, for the sake of clarification, can you explain to us what a landscape buffer C is?
Certainly. So there are three options within a C buffer, ranging from 20 feet in width up to 30 feet in width. The difference, if you're in the 20-foot width, there are a certain number of trees and shrubs that have to be planted within that buffer. If it's in a 20-feet, it's sort of a tighter planting. If it's in a 30-feet, it's a little bit of a looser planting. So it gives you the number of trees and shrubs that have to be planted within sort of a standard 100 feet. So for instance, if the tree, if the buffer is 30 feet width, within 100 feet, you could expect five canopy trees, two and a half under-story trees, and 19 shrubs. And so then that would be sort of repeated for per 100 feet. So it would range from 20 to 30 and then be planted with trees and shrubs.
Great. Commissioner Hens, you want to start us off?
Sure. I certainly emphasize with the neighbor to the north, I would not be happy either if this were the case. However, I do think this zone change is appropriate. I do think if you look especially to the east, the commercial runs the same depth. To the west, the commercial actually runs deeper. So I think this is an appropriate analysis by the staff, and I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Henley?
I do, I think, just so that I'm clear, and I'm looking at this properly, you know, there's three different current zonings that are going away for the transition to the new recommended zoning. And one of my questions was about the buffer, and it sounds like the buffer becomes a greater buffer with this transition versus what could have been, could have been done in the current zoning. Now, again, the use does change, the potential use does change, so I do take that in consideration. I do agree with my fellow commissioner that, you know, when you look at the surrounding parcels and adjacent parcels, it does seem appropriate. The, the, the one thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, the NS, of course, is referring to no short-term rentals. I know a lot of times when you think about units, regardless if they're apartments or just the density coming to a neighborhood off of relatively close to a major corridor, you know, short-term rentals is what becomes something that really gives a lot of angst to neighbors, particularly the immediately adjacent neighbors. And so that's been, that's been captured and prevented through the, through the current NS zoning that's here. So I believe it's appropriate. I think there's some considerations that are made. I do believe that you likely have a better developer than someone who doesn't live in the area that will be a little bit more considerate to those concerns. And also, I think, you know, you have the benefit of being closer to the commercial, closer to the main corridor, so you do have some relief as far as the congestion. And so what's proposed here, while it will add some more density, you do have the wider street, you do have the turning lane there. Again, I'm going to assume it does not require a traffic study.
So that would be determined with building permit. There's a threshold for sort of number of units and square footage of non-residential if included. And so that would be analyzed by NDOT with any building permit application, and then any appropriate studies would be done. I'm assuming if there's a drive, they would likely want it to be lined up with the drive that's across the street, and so NDOT would review that with any sort of building permits.
Okay. Thank you. So that was what I was going to ask, is without that, what other, what other reviews and impacts could be, could be imposed until that addressed out for me? That's all I had.
Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Chair. It's great to have this one kind of paired with the other plan that was across the street. Once again, I think in terms of adding missing middle housing close to a transit line, having multifamily, this is a good location for that. It sounds like one of the buildings is going to be retained, which is great. I know this manual does a lot of great work in our East Nashville community, and I'm sure we'll be very sensitive to design, but even if someone else were to design this, there is the downtown urban, Donaldson UDO that would help to control design. Appreciate the guidance from staff about the buffer zone, because I'm sure that will be concerning to neighbors, which it sounds like there'll be a pretty good-sized buffer there against the north to help to screen any noise or other kind of concerns that may result from that. So I think this is a good plan, and I support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally understand the neighbor's concern, because it used to be it was only one house, and now going to change to different usage and more density. But however, this is the place, I understand, it is a downtown UDO. So that was a vision for the downtown Donaldson, for the long-term vision, what kind of development will be appropriate when it's changed. And so now time is here, so we are facing with those tough decisions. And I think this proposed usage with, especially with NS designation attached, is really appropriate. And because of the UDO, I'm assuming all the buffer and street scape and landscape, or those are controlled by UDO. And as far as a buffer to the existing neighbor will be controlled by basic building codes and UDO, like added security. So for that reason, I think I understand neighbor may not be happy with it, but as far as going to make the vision as reality, this is a good proposal. And I am happy to hear with NDOT, with the building permit, and that will be closely involved. And I do understand Metro Stormwater's strict stormwater regulation will control runoff and so forth. So when it comes to building permit process, those neighbor's concern will be adequately addressed. So with that, I am in support of staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs?
To understand the neighbor's concern, I definitely realize, but I do think this is appropriate for this location, and I'd make a motion to recommend staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. That wraps up our items. So we move on to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any specific report for this time.
Hart?
No report.
What have you guys been doing? Executive Committee, I don't think we have anything, but I do want to acknowledge that we're losing our legal guidance, and certainly we'll miss you. I think we'll have a solid person coming behind you and look forward to working with you when you join in January. But Alex, we'll miss you and appreciate all you've done for us. I don't even know how long it's been, a couple years. So thank you very much. Directors' Report? Anything else for you?
Thank you all for your service and everything you do. Couple of items. First, the planning department is kicking off a public engagement and planning process around Hickory Hollow Mall. And so I think we have now enough information that I can give you a good briefing about the scope of work and get some feedback from you. So I'll schedule a work session in the new year to talk about what that might look like, and we're really, we're really excited about it. We've also jump-started work in Edge Hill and are working with neighborhood groups as well as Vanderbilt Belmont and MDHA. And so we're launching work there, which was a second commitment. And last but not least, I will be working with the chairman and Councilwoman Murphy to reschedule the tree work session with the commission, which was deferred at her request, and we're going to continue to work to engage all stakeholders in that process. So that's my report. Thank you so much. And Lisa, we're not meeting again until January.
January.
So I would wish all of you good health and good fortune and happiness in the end of January, or end of December and in the new year. So, thank you.
Best wishes for a good, good holiday season. And to all of you. Councilman Withers? Any? No? Really? You were there till midnight the other night. Okay. Too tired. All right. Well, with that, I will say the motion is, the meeting is adjourned, and happy holidays to all. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.